This is not, this is the fun part of this for business meeting. Get this out really everywhere. Who is getting the tea in the supper and having some more good time? So, I guess I'm gonna kinda ask pretty much. Most people already know each other. I don't know what I need to have go around everybody. We kind of all come up. Think I'll pass on that. We'll move on, we'll do a roll call. See what happens.
Okay, Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Bankley?
Here.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Arteson?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Holsinger? Mr. Postles?
Here.
Mr. Sheila? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, we have a forum.
They're good to go. All right, first item of business that I have here is approval of the minutes for the meeting. I think it's on the cheaters on. September 28th and October. September 28th and then October 26th. These, the legislators are not members of the GATs or whatever. These get sent out by email to the board members. We review them and make any corrections and changes there. So, this is the point where a lot of the corrections, if somebody has to bring them in. But for the most part, we've seen these through email. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the two meetings listed. So moved, one of a second.
Second.
If there aren't no corrections, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motions carried. Public comment? Well, the public considers the wide range of those sorts too. You just give anything to say or you wanna say anything. That's the point you do. All right, if there are no public comments, we'll move right along. And... Well, there's...
I'm gonna speed right.
Hey.
It's on the honor.
There for once.
Did you get the sign in?
Special words.
It's okay, man, you can say, okay.
Well, yeah, tell him, Bruce, people are came just in time for your comments. Bruce, don't get too comfortable because this commission's years are before we start. People came just in time. So if you have anything to say about the order balance, now's your, now's your turn.
It's now my time.
Yeah, that's your...
It's now my time.
I guess your farewell speech.
My farewell speech will be very short, just to tell everyone how much I appreciate the county commission staff and the members of the commission board members for the work that they do. It's been a great value to the county, I think particularly in recent years with the things that are going on from broadband to strategic plan. And I was just pleased that I could be the commissioner liaison for those parts and play a small part in many things that you're doing. And I look forward to reading in the mirror in future years for the good things that you're going to do. So I think our cooperation between that planning and the county has increased particularly in recent years. And that's a very good thing for everybody, for the county in particular. So thank you for all the services that you provide and your folks do. Much appreciated. Thank you for the kind words. We don't often hear a lot of us.
Okay, moving right along, it's now, it's the Mackenzie Show. Yeah, we're gonna do this quicker, I think.
We're gonna try. So we only have two development applications on the agenda. One is for the city of Altoona for in addition to Chopra Pediatrics. And the other is in Taylor Township for a ware of trucking new development. The first on the agenda is Chopra Pediatrics. This is located along Seventh Avenue in the city of Altoona. This is an aerial view of the existing site. And this proposal is for the construction of a roughly 3,000 square foot addition to the existing Chopra Pediatrics facility for the purpose of creating new physician office space. Additional site improvements also include new parking facilities, landscaping and stormwater management facilities. And key with the plan, with the development plan is also the proposal to merge the three adjacent parcels that make up the grass lot behind Chopra Pediatrics, which is where the proposed new parking will be located. The parcels are currently owned by the same developer that owns the parcel for Chopra Pediatrics, which is RK2LLC. And that will create a .415 acre parcel. Existing parcel, or existing parking for the site consists of 24 vehicle parking spaces, including three ADA accessible spaces. However, the proposed building addition here will eliminate 12 of those standard spaces. The newly proposed parking in the rear would consist of 40 standard vehicle parking spaces, which would create a net parking gain of 28 spaces for the entire site. This proposal also included bicycle parking with a development which is appreciated. Access to the building would be using the existing 24-foot wide bidirectional driveway to the original parking lot. That remains the same. However, the elimination of what appears to be a small, it's a, one second. I'm just looking if I have the dimensions here. No, so I don't have the dimensions, but it's a small paved apron at the end of the existing parking lot. Let me see if I can, in the aerial you can see right here. I had mentioned that in the new design for the parking lot, it would not have any space to turn around if vehicles entered the parking lot and it was full. It would be possibly difficult to maneuver out of the site. The proposed parking facility here is accessible from the alley. That is between the Chopra Pediatrics facility and the adjacent lot. And these would use also 24-foot wide bidirectional driveways. This one is a thruway that connects from this alley here to, I believe that is, is that Eighth? Right here. So that would have an entrance there. Yeah, Eighth Avenue. I did make a comment for, in order to provide for better pedestrian safety when connecting to the entrance of the building here, that they should, sorry, they should paint or include painted striping for the crosswalk between the parking facility and the doctor's office. Landscaping plans provided with the proposal include various shrubs and plants along the foundation of the new building, as well as various street trees throughout the site. Street trees are proposed along 13th Street and Eighth Avenue, as well as the connecting alleyway between the existing site and the new parking facility, which should make for an attractive site, as well as provide sufficient buffer for headlight glare onto and off of the property. Environmentally, our review of natural features did not reveal any immediate environmental concerns. The site is located within the Beaver Dam branch of the Juniata River watershed. The proposal does include underground infiltration and detention basins, which should help to offset any potential negative impacts on the watershed as a result of the proposed addition.
All right, let's, I guess we do these separately. Heard the staff recommendations. I have a motion to approve the staff actions and recommendations, item five on the agenda. We'll have a second. Second, are there any questions?
Who made the move? Jim, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motions carried. Moving right along, item six is ware of trucking.
Okay, so this proposal is for ware of trucking. This is located along Frederick Road in Taylor Township. This is for, I just wanna point out before I move on, this map here shows this six acre parcel. The green is prime agricultural soil. And the hatched area that surrounds the entire property is the federally protected agricultural security area. So this six acre parcel is like smacked out in the middle of that. Okay, so this is along Frederick Road. This proposal, oh, this is the aerial of the parcel. It's kind of hard to see with the way that the projector is. But it is existing crop land here. So this proposal is for the construction of two 10,000 square foot tractor trailer maintenance and storage buildings with a detached 2,400 square foot office space here for ware of trucking. Additionally, gravel drives and parking, water and onlot septic and stormwater management facilities are proposed with the plan. Access to the proposed site appears to be through this 40-foot wide gravel drive that connects to, this is all intended to be gravel truck parking here. And then the intended use for the site is specified to be trucking, storage and maintenance, with plans to add more storage buildings in the future. I did note that the potential, or the development has the potential to generate significant truck traffic to the site. So the developers should consult with Taylor Township to anticipate any potential negative impacts on local transportation. The proposed parking for the office building is a gravel lot with nine delegated gravel parking spaces, as well as one van accessible parking space. And while the plan includes a gravel truck area for, all like this whole area here is proposed as gravel truck parking. And then this includes four designated gravel parking spaces by these storage buildings. No landscaping plans were included with the proposal. However, it does appear that this area here is listed as 10,000 square feet of landscaped grass area that will be maintained surrounding the proposed office building. Environmentally, our review of natural features, as I showed you in the previous map, revealed the presence of prime agricultural soils on portions of the site. Generally, we do not recommend the conversion of existing farmland for development in areas consisting of or surrounded by agricultural security areas. The proposed development would convert the entirety of the six acre parcel into that, of the land that's characterized by the primac soil for a facility that could feasibly be condensed in terms of its limit of disturbance. The limit of disturbance for this site said 5.86 acres of a six acre parcel. So feasibly, that would be using the entire parcel to convert it to an industrial purpose, surrounded by, once again, prime agricultural soil. My suggestion was to consult the conservation district to determine the best land use for the site, so as not to exacerbate any existing environmental conditions. The sites located within the Frankstown branch, underground stone infiltration trenches are proposed throughout the site to manage stormwater runoff, which should help mitigate the potential negative impacts on the watershed. I did note here that this proposal would not be consistent with countywide planning efforts due to, or in our comprehensive plan, we make notes to include agricultural representation in economic development decisions, including kind of roping in ABCD Corps and Blair Conservation District on decisions like this in order to potentially develop an industrial area specifically for agriculture. However, it doesn't seem like the right fit for the existing land that's there. And especially converting primac soil.
Is there residential there, decided?
There, yeah, there are houses there.
It appeared to me, you know, like it's prime farmland, it's agricultural securities, agricultural. And that, right off the bat, makes it inconsistent with the county comprehensive plan.
Correct. My concern for the ag, or the ag security area that surrounds the entire site is that even though this site is not ag security area, industrial use on this site would affect the surrounding parcels and the future land use of this site as well. And with the primac soils, once again, we typically do not recommend any conversion of those, especially if they're existing crop land that's in use.
Where do we get all these tough messages? So basically, the finding is that it's inconsistent with the area, with the county comprehensive plan, and it exists and it is current, basically at its current location, absolutely a problem because of where it's at. Residential, some of those, when it's out of the truck, truck engine coming in, I don't know.
It's not residential development necessarily. It's like farmhouses on farm properties, so.
Yeah, and what residential structures are down there, kind of scattered out?
I'm not even sure exactly where this is, but I guess.
It's down at Wardport.
Where's Court?
Court Mattel.
No, that one.
You got it?
Code.
Okay.
If you go, the big intersection.
Well, this is just an image, but I can kind of put it on there.
All right, I guess the staff recommendation is that it's inconsistent with comprehensive plan. Do I have a motion to accept?
Linda has a question on the table.
Okay, Linda.
Yeah, so we...
She went, tried to mount by show, I swear this is.
Is it in the middle of the park or is it in the residential alley?
No, it's not.
No, it's all farmland, the whole street. It's right, just south of Martinsburg.
It's, I'm trying to think of the landmark. It's right outside Martinsburg.
I think it's near the silos, the green silos on Frederick Road.
It's at Fred, at Curraghville.
No. Parallel to 164, south of 165.
By, um, Rose Slants.
I think so, yeah. No. But, yeah.
Yeah, the green.
This is the parcel here. So this is...
There's the railroad right about there.
Yeah, let me use the link that crosses. This is Cove Lane Road at the crossroads here. And this is just up from Cove Lane Road.
So what, that sure does affect a lot of farmland a lot of that.
This parcel here is six acres surrounded by, like I said, ag security area. So it's in used farmland, or farmland in use.
The ultimate authority that can approve or disapprove this project.
Well, here's, here's the thing, what happened with this, Bruce? We're advisory. And we, our charter, basically, our main charter is to find, find it either, see whether it's consistent with the area, with the county comprehensive plan. It still leaves the ultimate decision, what, what land use, what you're gonna do, what the land use is gonna be with the individual township. So they, we, we can say that we find it inconsistent with the area comprehensive plan. The township will say, or make, make me say, well, we don't care, we're gonna do it anyway. So that's, that's kind of where the ball is. But I think the ball, from what I can see, you know, it's in the, it's obviously inconsistent with what we've said about development on prime farmland.
And we do make recommendations to consult the Blair Conservation District, once again, about the conversion of the farmland. They typically, not that they're the authority, but they are the ones who have that interest. So getting them involved in this, if they're not already, we do make that recommendation. And once again, in our plan, there is efforts to kind of engage with ABCD Corps in the agricultural sector of the, of economic development. So kind of if they're wanting to develop an industrial agricultural area, which is what is kind of recommended here, then it should be done, or it should be laid out in a business way and not done haphazardly.
Now, I would think, so my recommendation would be if we find it inconsistent with the area comprehensive plan, with recommendation that the Blair County Conservation District, ABCD and all, some of the entities be solid to see what, to see what it's talking about. Usually, there's been a display around our letters to the county board in the sense, you, I mean, these decisions are best left to the, to the, to the, like, they're the governing bodies, elected officials. So that's, that's, so I guess I'm looking for a motion to something. That's bad.
I know you do approve her letter as well. I think she covered all the things that I wanted to say.
So it basically is funded inconsistent.
Correct. And I list, once again, I do list the reasons for agricultural economic purposes and also for the protection or the conservation of that land specifically.
Do I have a second?
Second.
If there are no further discussion, all those in favor, she'd probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motions carried. Next item is, this is kind of, this is item seven on the agenda. These are for the non-board members. These are the staff level reviews. These are things that go to company board members by via email. And they're usually things that go live, that are all being reviewed, like we've shown, like we just did. There are things like, you can see up there, substitutions, property line changes, things that, just, they're not, they're not really. So now, if anybody has any questions about any of these, now's the time to ask, can't take. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the actions of the staff concerning the letters for the items on item seven of the agenda. So the, I will motion, one second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carry. Next item on the agenda, wow, okay. We're on, we're on eight minutes. These are things that come through from municipalities. And these are the, the hour reviews that's paid for, and all basically out of local share money. But it is things that, again, get sent to the board members by email. And they don't, it's letters to support.
Permits.
Permit require, statements of, okay, we support a part of a certain application. And don't really require a review. So again, any of these items on this list, now, anybody has a question, now's the time to ask. Like I said, everybody has seen these through via email. So, are there any questions to Mackenzie? Anything on up there? If not, I will approve it. I'll ask for a motion to approve the staff actions for the staff level reviews of the, those items submitted by Ms. Alex. So moved. Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motions carried. I think we just, now, let's see, we turn the, we turn the show over to Sharon. That will happen.
So, I just wanted to gather up the, all of the DCV local shares grant that opens September 1st through November 30th. In total, there were 15 grants that I submitted for that listing. I'm sorry, $6.2 million total for the county area that I submitted on behalf of the municipality, not nonprofits. So we're anticipating award status. Initially, they're saying about, I'll put together for next year. So we'll have to wait, wait it out a year, so to see the results. But that's, that's granting that if the common finance authority doesn't extend the deadlines and keep moving their board meetings to make the award notice that they did this past year. So that's the listing I submitted this year.
You wrote all those grants.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent. It is not a small task.
Does Dave ever let you out of the office? Does Dave ever let you out of the office?
To come here.
In reality, you know, again, the state seems to be delinquent on the policy. When they keep pushing, the decision period points back.
I'm sorry?
They keep pushing, the decision points back.
Yeah.
It comes up, it's supposed to be decided this October, this March October.
And what we heard, the counties that have their own casino, that collected their own, basically bought up money for the local shares account, which is where the casino money generated from, or this grant. The counties that have their own casinos, those grant awards are supposed to be announced in the spring. And then the rest of the statewide ones will be, will be announced in the fall, where this past year, it was the flip flop. They did the statewide announcements here, the general casino charities, just second.
Yeah, this is exactly what I wanted to try and do, to try and get a, you know, get some of these things in process. I'm very happy with what it seems to be going. Now, question, now, how many, we actually see, that's what I'm always, that's always what I'm always. All right, nothing else, Sharon, that's it.
No, nobody have any questions?
They won't like questions about it, grants or anything.
What's, now what you hear from them? Some is an email, that's great.
Well, actually, I don't receive the warning, though. It lists the president, the chairperson, three, the municipality, the nonprofit first, and then the secondary contract. So I actually have to wait until they give the announcement, that I believe they almost get a board meeting when they give the announcement. That's something that I should do. But they'll get me a board announcement before I see it.
No.
Ask if there was a stipend, that she could put a stipend at age three. What do you think, Dave?
We're moving ahead, and I think we're moving ahead in the directions we want, we want the plan and commission to go. And we do actual planning, but every period of time, we spend all my time, with all our time, trying to figure out how we're gonna pay the bills and struggling to keep ourselves, but we're actually moving out of that phase now, where we're actually doing some real planning work and seeing some things, trying to help municipalities out. One of the things we've suggested is that, and we offer to the municipalities is grant action services. And this is, this is evident of that, where it comes from. So we're trying to keep this in the head on, so. I think we're moving in the right direction. All right, moving on, I guess, we're, Dave, I hear you back just in time, I guess. Because the next one is this action by governing bodies, is there anything that, what's, what's that all about?
So, actually...
Oh, Mackenzie had that.
That's me. Holleysburg submitted their draft comprehensive plan, Holleysburg 2035, for our review. And Dave and I have the opportunity to kind of sit down and go through it and kind of make some comments. I have it here, I'm kind of wanting to give you an overview, but also wanting to kind of keep it brief. The comprehensive plan here is designed to replace the borough's existing plan of over four decades with a revitalized version, or vision, for community development and goals and objectives that will help achieve that. This plan considers threats and opportunities relevant to the community over a 10-year span and attempts to align an action plan with addressing these targets. Holleysburg 2035 outlines six objectives on which to concentrate resources in order to hit these targets. They are similar, gosh, similar to the priorities that I... They are similar, gosh, similar to the priorities that are in blue on the right hand of the left hand side here. The out, the six objectives are sustain small town character and vitality, expand housing options, improve streets and sidewalks, improve stormwater management, integrate economy, recreation and culture, and to support business economy. And those are all priorities that align with, or those are, those are the objectives that align with these planning priorities here. Dave's gonna try to make it a little bit easier to see. Each of these objectives, like I said, aligns with one or more of the critical issues described in Alleghenies Ahead, which was designed to provide this framework for local municipalities to derive their own comprehensive planning efforts. This comprehensive plan includes key issues that are integral to many other plans. However, we did applaud Holidaysburg's in-depth analysis on the borough's past and present as it helps to develop the vital context for many of the issues that are presented in this plan. We did feel that there were some parts of the plan that were well delineated, that were well delineated to the necessary extent. However, there were quite a few areas within the plan that we felt were deficient and lacking the critical content or in need of revision. So the following issues were pointed out in our review of the comp plan. So I'm gonna try to pull them up right now. On page seventeen. I'm trying to get there, okay. On page seventeen, the section is the only inclusion in the entire plan of coordinating planning efforts. The municipality's planning code requires comprehensive planning efforts to not only address aligning regional planning efforts, but also the planning efforts of adjoining municipalities, which is missing from this plan. So that would be, you know, Blair Township, Allegheny Township, Frankstown Township, the municipalities surrounding Holidaysburg Borough. And there is no inclusion of any other planning efforts outside of this one statement of the regional planning efforts here. Additionally, this page states that agriculture, which is recognized as one of Blair County's top priorities, is not relevant to Holidaysburg. However, we did not agree that this section is irrelevant to Holidaysburg or its comprehensive plan. Agriculture is the region's single largest active land use. And the integration of agricultural representation is outlined in Alleghenies Ahead. And with properties of current contention that are included and even featured in this comprehensive plan, such as Stole Farm, which we will also get to. We do feel that agriculture is not only a relevant priority to the community, but to this plan and therefore necessary for inclusion. The next comment that we made was on page, I know you don't have the plan in front of you. Trying to give you the best version that I can. I did send it out in the email, or Rhonda sent it out or attached it in the email. So you might have had the opportunity to review. Okay, so this is the stormwater management section of the plan. This, I will scroll through the entirety of it so that you can see. This is actually a stormwater map of the Stole Farm property and the surrounding flood plain. So they include this in their comprehensive plan.
So that addresses the issue we had the last.
I'm actually going to get to that altogether. So once again, addresses Stole Farm. All I'm pointing out here is that it is mentioned multiple times throughout the, throughout the comprehensive plan. So this is the end of what is included for stormwater management. And I, my comments for this issue were, for an issue as problematic for Gay Support specifically as stormwater, we did feel that this selection, this section could be heavily built out to include more descriptive information about the existing conditions, weaknesses and threats to include a section for opportunities, which in stormwater management was omitted altogether. Threats and opportunities were included alongside strengths and weaknesses for all other sections. However, the only threat listed for stormwater management was climate change is expected to increase the frequency of storm and flooding events. And that is the only threat that they could think of. And there was no information for potential opportunities for stormwater, which we did mention that it felt that it was an incomplete submission. It felt that it was an incomplete section because it was omitted altogether. Overall, it does seem like this section was not complete in terms of a storm, a robust stormwater action plan. And that is something that we feel should be heavily prioritized in such an environmentally sensitive area, as we've pointed out before. Additionally, to point out, the MPC also requires the inclusion of water resource protection planning. And this plan only includes stormwater and not source water. Moving forward, on page fifty-eight, oh, sorry. This is the, the next section of, for the support of the business community in Holidaysburg. The whole section, this is it. They don't list any threats to business in Holidaysburg like they do with other sections. And they only list one opportunity for business expansion in Holidaysburg, which is that the diamond is a historic landmark. So it really seems that, that a lot of these later sections in the plan are kind of afterthoughts, like they haven't really been created comprehensively, like a comprehensive plan should. One of our major concerns for this plan was implementation, which is the final section here. Implementation for a ten-year comprehensive plan should be strategic, actionable and include clear goals, action items and timelines, something that this fails to do. The provided implementation plan, which I will show you here, is this for the entire ten years. And it's not clear or descriptive on the specifics of who is responsible for doing what and when. This portion should be robust, once again, and include information to continue the planning process moving forward. And the two pages that are provided do not provide ten years' worth of implementation strategy. So we kind of made some suggestions for how to build out this and turn it into something that is a comprehensive and strategic delineation of action items for ten years. Other than that, this is the end of the plan. We did, there is no like information to close the plan or anything or wrap it up. We did include that throughout the plan, there were multiple spelling grammar and syntax errors. It seemed like, I did create a separate letter to entire, or to address those revisions entirely. But overall, it just seems like this is a.
Chance.
It, it seems like it's unfinished, it seems.
It's not complete, it's incomplete.
It, it seems extremely incomplete. And while the, so my comment was that while the comprehensive plan is mostly consistent with our comprehensive planning efforts, the above comments should be adequately addressed during the revision process and that we did request that any significant changes be submitted for our review.
I could see, one of the things that concerned me, and this was the, the two visits we had, last two meetings with the, with the Gay Support, I don't think Gay Support Association. I think they've got some legitimate concerns out there about their, their water, their flood, stormwater management and their sewer management, sewer systems that need to be addressed if they wanna develop that section out in there, the way they talked about. And that's, I'm not the case necessarily of developing that section. But I think Gay Support's concerns have to be addressed before they get too far down the road. That's a personal opinion on that. If you look at how the, how that water, the first thing appeared to be that one section they were talking about, it was, it was improper, it was something to begin with. It was farmland, and then if you look at, it had a lot of wetlands. If you look at the drainage zone, it was draining directly into Gay Support. Wasn't, wasn't running the other way, going into the area where you already have a problem with drains. So, you know, let's not activate your problems any further. Let's see what we can do to help. My opinion, because we're, we're holding the rules. But then, that's a personal opinion. I have no say in that.
Any other, anybody have any questions about this? I'd like to move on because. Do we offer suggestive wording for some of these issues that they haven't addressed? Like, you know, how do you reach out to other communities in the area, municipalities? Would stormwater be something that you would address with other municipalities that we have? Can we give them suggestive or examples of other?
Because again, I was gonna have, because each of those require that some of these land, townships and areas start to do comprehensive plans. I don't think they, if they have, they haven't updated. The idea for the one we did, the Southern Allegheny, was create a framework where you could fit individual townships, counties in that. In that framework, it didn't require, it wasn't reliant on getting state capital money to make progress. Create a broad framework where we can point out what our issues were, move ahead.
Does that plan adequate, adequately address parking?
Um, so they do have information on pedestrian, pedestrian corridors and traffic, I believe it's traffic safety and, or transportation and sidewalk systems to make improvements to sidewalk corridors. Let me see. Here are, they do, okay. So this is the section on improving streets and sidewalks. They have assessments for creating more complete streets. Showing strengths and weaknesses that are observed throughout Holidaysburg. They include walkworks in their comprehensive plan and the two walkworks trails that are in Holidaysburg. They do outline some safety concerns in some corridors here. This is Hart Street onto Penn Street. They describe that as a dangerous corridor. They also kind of list some, like this is a really robust, like a really good example of how they built out a very robust section for this issue. They list many different weaknesses in transportation and many different opportunities for how to address them, including renderings of potential hypothetical situations that would address those issues. So I do think that that's possible for all sections. But yes, sidewalks and transportation are heavily built out in this, this plan.
Another question. The bear that that plan doesn't address at all, relationship with the county regarding the jail. It should mention that they need to be at least included in any conversations with that issue.
What I'm hearing out of the whole thing is that, to me, it looks like there's sections of this that are incomplete, need more work, needs these to address and be discussed with the surrounding municipalities, surrounding all of their. So to me, it's just incomplete.
Correct. And from this, I suggested with Mr. Holodnik, who is the planning and zoning director from Holidaysburg Borough, I've suggested potentially sitting down and going over this with him so that we can really flesh out a lot of the details because it is very much, in my opinion, a draft that is gray and bones, but it definitely needs a lot more built out in some sections. And there's a lot of resources available to help him do that or to help Holidaysburg do that. And we would like to kind of help push that along.
Can we move on then, I guess? If there are no further questions, I want to get some, we get the good part of this. Okay, moving right along, I guess you got one more there. Holidaysburg has a, a zoning zoning petition. I'm afraid I asked one twice.
Okay, so last month, or at the last meeting, we reviewed the rezoning petition from BC Holdings to Holidaysburg to rezone the Stole Farm property. This is the actual formal submission to the county from Holidaysburg Borough, which gave us the opportunity to re-review it using new information. So as previously mentioned, the purpose of this petition is to rezone this plot of Stole Farm from TND Traditional Neighborhood Development to general residential R2. I included, I'm so sorry for the transitions, they're so slow. I included the existing, the existing zone of Holidaysburg, that's against our claim. This is Stole Farm, this is, sorry, it's included as a traditional neighborhood development currently surrounded by residential.
Okay, can we go back to the other one?
Uh, okay.
Just for a second.
Sure. Okay, sorry.
Okay, this is, this is, this is the area that was, right now it's, it was, it's R1 residential. It was, it's farm prime, farmland, it's all in wetland.
Yes, so this is.
This is Gay Support, right? There it is. And the flow, the flow on this thing is from here this way. Right into their, right into that area. And that's been, that's been, the residents' complaint has been that they already have, every time it rains, they get flooded. And they have sewer back, sewer backup problems, the sewer lines are inadequate. And to me, it's not R2 unless sunny or R1, which what it is now, it's even worse. It's right now, it's, to me, it's, it's wetland, it's farmland. And until, I agree that it's surrounded by residential and the R2, but they need to address some of these other issues.
So in the comprehensive plan, information is included specifically to address Stole Farm, including this section, which specifically requests to retain the TND zoning for the Stole Farm property. This is included in their comprehensive plan. The Stole Farm, as I showed you in the comprehensive plan, the Stole Farm flood map is shown here. It is included in the plan when describing the flood problems being exacerbated in Gay Support. So the retaining of the TND zoning is included in their plan. We have already, I sent them a letter initially that included the environmental aspects, which were the preservation of the agricultural lands and how that's a priority outcome for us, as well as the address, addressing the flood plain that encroaches on the property. I mentioned that retaining TND zoning for this particular plot of land is mentioned throughout the draft of the comprehensive plan for Holidaysburg Borough. And while the planning commission has noted previously, and as you had mentioned, that TND may not be the most appropriate designation for this zoning district, given the existing land use and environmental conditions, rezoning the tract to R2, once again, would allow for less developmental restriction in an area that requires stringent provisions and diligence when reviewing potential developmental impacts on the surrounding communities. And additionally, once again, the Holidaysburg comprehensive plan specifies that development of this property would require individualized attention to the stormwater needs to minimize the accumulation and impact, which once again goes back to the comprehensive plan needing to be, you know, more robust and built out in that way. So I did, even though we had already addressed this in our previous statement about this issue regarding BC Holdings, I once again mentioned that this would not be, this would not align with our comprehensive plan to resemble this draft. And it would not align with Holidaysburg's draft comprehensive plan either.
I agree with that because, you know, originally that traditional neighborhood development was intended to extend the fabric and of the streets and, you know, alleyways and buildings of Holidaysburg, bringing it, being a unique community, community that Holidaysburg is with very narrow streets and alleys and blocks and such as. Intended to extend that out into that area so that Holidaysburg could become a bigger, you know, walkable community with, you know, interesting spaces and, you know, well-defined streets and that. And the other thing that was meant to do was, you know, to, to create a multitude of different kinds of housing in one place where you could have apartment buildings, small meeting, a large single-family residential, you know, townhouses and, and all kinds of different units for different kinds of people to. and, and all kinds of different units for different kinds of people to live, so it didn't become, you know, an area of, you know, all one type of income housing. And I believe that, you know, by doing that, by having like a more dense environment, you know, with, with all these different types of building, it's certainly increased the tax base, you know, for, you know, real estate, you know, in that space. And I, and I believe that the stormwater system problems can be solved. I mean, it involves good engineering, you know, it involves, you know, retention basins, and underground, underground, you know, uh, stormwater retention, anything that's required. They, they can solve the issues of the stormwater, but I, I think it's important to keep, that we recommend that they keep that, because it, I think it's part of the fact, part of the importance of the fabric of the community.
Does, sir, is there, is either one of those two items, do they require any action on our court, or this is? Uh, I'm not sure what the actions are, though, that we.
Well, it's both of them are defined, whether or not they're consistent with the comprehensive plan and consistent with the practice of planning in general.
Are they, are they?
Neither one.
Neither one, so, so the recommendation would be that neither one are consistent with the, the current, our, the current.
Current practice of planning.
Our, our current planning practices, and need, and need further review and work. So that would be, so that would be our recommendation for both items ten and eleven. Why haven't, not has a letter been prepared for that? Okay, so I have a motion to, I'll take a hundred, entertain a motion to accept the recommendations in the letter that the staff has prepared concerning the, uh, the status of the Holidaysburg comprehensive plan and the rezoning request.
So, move.
One sec.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I think those, motion carried. Now we're gonna move on to Dave, and Dave's gonna do a real brief.
Cincinnati needs to renew our workers' comp, it's only a fifty cents a month. I just need authorization to sign.
Okay, I have a motion to let, uh, Dave sign the agreement.
So, can't we get it?
I got a, I got a motion, I got a second deck, it's a, it's a. All right, it's, uh, all those in favor, thinking about the same, aye?
Aye.
Both, extensions, motion carried. Now, this is the time, board members, you have anything, do you have, you have any complaints, you want us to do anything, or say anything at this point, or do you wanna go?
Just remember, you're between us and supper.
All right. No, nothing, okay. Then I'll ask, then the next one, then we ask Walt, if he has something he wants.
I just want to make sure I understand, that warehouse trucking thing you were talking about. Bottom line is, it's up to the Taylor Township supervisors, they wanna do what they can do, whether it's consistent or.
Whatever we say, they can do it, and they can do it.
They can do what they want.
They can do what they want.
Okay.
What we're saying is, it's not consistent with our, with the comprehensive plan.
Right.
For the county-wide plan, but, again, those decisions are decisions of the elected officials, the grant, the support board, because basically, we're appointed, we're appointed, I understand, that's all.
So basically, they live there, let them go with themselves, see how do whatever they want it to.
All right. All right, I have, there's a list of, like, upcoming events, Christmas, New Year's Day, oh, you got one of those things?
Yeah, um, you probably saw it in the mirror, it's been in twice now. Uh, we're in the middle of outreach for broadband, uh, looking for gaps, whether those gaps are physical, whether those gaps are financial, or those gaps are just, I don't know how to use a smartphone type thing. Um, there's three of them left, there's one Thursday night, uh, in Tyrone, there is one Monday night in Williamsburg, and one on Tuesday night, the Southern Co, or the Southern Blair, uh, Rec, or, no, Senior Center. Um, they start at six-thirty, they're open to the public, there's a brief presentation, but the crux of the thing is a conversation afterwards, where we're able to discern where the needs are in the county, so we can direct our share of one and a quarter billion dollars the state has available to fill these holes in. I just wanna add those dates, and, so if you know people, you know people in areas that don't have broadband, whether they don't physically have it, or they can't afford it, please get them to one of those meetings, so they can be aware of it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjourned. Okay, okay, next, let's see.